Good evening and welcome to the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education's Special Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Thursday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Education's Special Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Mersbrock?
Aye.
President Tominski?
Aye. Thank you to those who came tonight to share your thoughts. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the public comment to address a recent petition. Pursuant to Iowa Code Section two seventy-nine dot eight B, the Board is required to include the petition item on an agenda within thirty days of it being turned in and allow anyone who wishes to provide public comment regarding this item to do so. It does not require the Board to take action. Public comment is a time set aside for community input and the Board will not discuss or take any action on any matter during public comment. Confidential student or staff information shall not be shared in a public meeting. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. The Board Secretary is, uh, will recognize individuals to make their comments at the appropriate time. The orderly process of the Board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted. Only those speakers, uh, only those speakers recognized by the Board Secretary will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. If disruptive, uh, if disruptive, the individual making comments or other individuals causing disruption may be asked to leave the Board meeting. Any defamatory comments made during public comment are the sole responsibility of the individual using those comment, making those comments and could subject the individual to legal action. Brian, how many speakers do we have signed up for public comment?
We have eleven.
Before we begin and for the record, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and your address. Uh, with eleven speakers this evening, you will each be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Rindstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the Board and choose not to speak in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. If your comments are in agreement with a previous speaker and you simply want to acknowledge that, you may do so. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This Board will have zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. We have received all requests and will listen to all submitted. Any questions from, uh, public speakers will be documented and responded to at a later time. Board comments regarding this topic will be, will be reserved until all public comments have been heard. Ryan, please call our first speaker.
Donald Tyne. Speaking about the Harrison School.
Yeah, my name is, uh, Donald Tyne. I live at ten fourteen Twelfth Avenue Southeast and I'm here to talk about, um, the future plans of Harrison, um, grade school. I grew up in Cedar Rapids. I attended Harrison Grade School in the nineteen sixties. The two thousand eight flood wiped out the northwest neighborhoods and the northwest side of town is only, is the only neighborhood that was not rebuilt. I ride my bike through that area quite often and, um, you will find that there were only two homes standing on F Avenue Northwest. Now the city wants to take away the northwest history in Seoul by tearing down Harrison Grade School that has been, uh, dedicated to the service of Cedar Rapids since nineteen thirteen, nineteen thirty. Harrison Gr- School has grown, classrooms have been added to keep up with the growing enrollment. Recently in two thousand sixteen, a community recreation center was built next to Harrison School and three hundred and thirteenth, uh, students attend and use that center for recreation every, every, for such events as volleyball and basketball. I'm here to state I'm not in favor of tearing down the school. It was built during a period where they were, uh, built to stay and, um, last for years and it, it is a great service to our, uh, community and to the students of the northwest side of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Thank you.
Larry Hagerman. Will be speaking about keeping Harrison open.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Hagerman. I live at, uh, one five zero six Kaler Drive Northwest. I'm a proud alumnus of Harrison, Roosevelt, and Jefferson. And so I'm here tonight to speak, uh, to encourage the Board to reconsider their decision of tearing down Harrison School. According to the newspaper article I read today, the, um, cost to tear down this, uh, existing school, to build a new school and to, uh, save some of the valuable artifacts would cost thirty million dollars. I firmly believe that a much smaller portion of that could be used to do updating to that school. I've been in the school, I've actually, uh, brought people over to the, to the school, uh, from Africa, believe it or not, to speak to students at, uh, Harrison. They were very warmly received. The teachers, uh, uh, were very, uh, cooperative in working with us. So I've had the chance to visit the school. Yes, it's not new, it's not shiny, but it's very structurally sound. And, uh, so that's why I'm saying a portion of that money could be used to improve, like the, uh, air conditioning or the heating system. There's a gym in that school that was, looks just like the gym that I went to, um, but I know right next door, there is a Northwest Rec Center, which when it was built, uh, it was highly publicized that the school would have the benefit of using that rec center for PE classes. Yet in, in talking to the people that work at the rec center, I found out surprisingly that it's, it's not hardly used anymore. Students don't go over there for their PE classes. So instead of building a new gym, why don't we look at using that rec center? It has four, it has two full-time gymnasiums could easily be used. The, um, paper also mentioned the fact that Harrison is recognized on the historical site now. That would allow the, the school district and the grant writers for the school district to apply for grants. I wonder if that's been done. And also because Harrison is in a low income and middle income area, that would also allow for, uh, money to be requested to help build up that school. And I'm, I'm wondering if that has been pursued at all. The, uh, school board has talked for a long, long time about having, uh, neighborhood schools. Harrison is the only real neighborhood school in that area. The closest one is Madison, which is approximately a mile away. And then the next one is Hoover, which is two and a half miles away. So if here, now you're talking about maybe putting a, a building right behind, tearing down the existing building, building a new one. And to me, it just doesn't make economic sense. It doesn't make cultural sense. It doesn't, uh, really advance what we're trying to do for the kids in this area, which is to have a quality education. So what I'm saying just then is some of that money goes to help, uh, make improvements in the school. Some of that money could also then be used to, um, as other money in this, in system to help with teacher salaries, to help, uh, just in general, to be able to present a quality education. I think Harrison provides a cultural center that we all are proud of in Cedar Rapids and so I'm urging you to reconsider your vote and to change that vote. Uh, the only discouraging thing I see, when I look out here tonight, I see four board members and I don't see three others. So I hope this really is an issue that you are fair-minded about and will consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Johnson. Will be speaking about the topic of five hundred thousand dollar investment on the
So I'm Stacy Johnson. My address is fifteen fifteen Memorial Drive Southeast. Uh, I have been to Harrison as a volunteer for environmental education. I think while it was built from the nineteen thirties, I think it is very viable to be remodeled from the inside and keep the outside. And this, the outside of the Northwest Recreation Center was so important that the, that the Cedar Rapids School District paid the city five hundred thousand dollars to make sure the exterior, uh, matched the northwest recreation, the pitch of the roof, the colors, so they matched. That was paid over five years, a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. It was paid off in twenty twenty-one. We, and as the previous speaker, I've, I've spoken to the Northwest Recreation Center and they have confirmed that no students at Harrison have been there since twenty twenty. So we were actually paying off that hundred thousand, or five hundred thousand dollars for longer than it, than it was used by Harrison Elementary School. The other thing is that the land that's leased to the Northwest Recreation Center by the Cedar Rapids School System, that agreement was one dollar a year for the next one hundred years. So there must have been something, uh, back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen, when this twenty-eight year agreement was signed by both parties, there must have been something there that you wanted to protect and you wanted it to look the same. Uh, I'm just, I would be very discouraged if this decision wasn't reversed and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Erin Kronbaugh. Will be speaking about Harrison.
Uh, Erin Kronbaugh, four twenty-seven Twenty-Sixth Street Southeast. Um, obviously you know many of us signed the petition because we're tired of seeing our historical buildings raised for progress and new buildings. Um, new and shiny, really, at least in my opinion, and I think, um, not just my opinion, but new and shiny isn't going to solve the issue of losing students to other districts, at least not entirely, and that's a way bigger issue than a brand-new building. There are also countless examples that I know you've been made aware of in surrounding communities of how communities that care about their history, uh, can modernize old buildings without tearing them down. We can be that creative, I'm really quite sure of it, but are choosing not to be. I also don't understand as a board, kind of how you can square the environmental impact of tearing down such a big, old, well-built building like Harrison. I know that newer buildings can be sold as more energy efficient, but I'm unconvinced that there aren't a ton of improvements that can be made to an old building that can have a similar impact, not to mention the embodied environmental impact from constructing the Harrison Building originally. I know you've heard it before, but the greenest building is the one that's already built and it feels very short-sighted at best to tear down Harrison. Please reconsider your decision and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jay Vavra. Will be speaking on Harrison.
Uh, good evening Board. My name is Jay Vavra and, uh, twenty-five oh one Fourteenth Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Stouffer Hunter. Uh, Mark is regretfully unable to be here tonight, but he asked me to read his comments and share them with you tonight, so that's what I'm here to do. Dear Cedar Rapids School District Board Members, please carefully and thoughtfully reconsider the decision made by most of you in the spring of this year that called for plans to demolish the historic Harrison School structure in the thirteen hundred block of Eleventh Street Northwest and replace it with an entirely new elementary school structure. Please consider reversing this earlier decision and support the strong recommendation made by the Volunteer Task Force devoted in support of retaining and renovating the historic nineteen thirty component of Harrison, demolishing the existing nineteen fifty-four annex only and expanding the nineteen thirty structure with a new large addition structure. If you haven't yet, go to Iowa City and see in person both the Longfellow and Horace Mann Elementary School facilities. Both have renovated and kept restored their historic original exteriors, created a new modern and functional interior, and built large new additions that are very compatible with both the historic structure and the character of the neighborhoods they existed. This works in Iowa City, it can work in Cedar Rapids. I applaud the Board's plan to renovate the historic nineteen twenty-three, nineteen twenty-four Franklin School as stated within the upcoming bond referendum. I am grateful for the consideration of the Board to plan to only close the nineteen fifteen Arthur and nineteen fifteen Garfield Elementary School structures at the end of the current school year instead of demolishing them, thus providing an opportunity for these to be repurposed with the assistance of the historic preservation community. Please consider this. Have you noticed that there has been little to no outcry about the loss of the nineteen sixty-seven architecture of the Coolidge School demolished in twenty twenty-one? Or the loss of the nineteen seventy architecture of the Jackson School demolished last year? Or the loss of the nineteen fifty-four architecture of the Arthur Annex earlier this year? Nineteen thirty architecture of Harrison is very different and very special. It will be terribly missed and never forgotten if it is destroyed. Nineteen thirty Harrison architecture is of the same structural integrity and classic architectural beauty for Cedar Rapids as Veterans Memorial Building, Lynn County Courthouse, the Roosevelt Hotel, the Scottish Rite Temple, Theater Cedar Rapids slash the Iowa Theater, the Merchants National Bank or U.S. Bank Building, and the Paramount Theater. All of these were built within the same five-year period as Harrison School and all are irreplaceable cultural architectural icons. All have strong community meeting, meaning, sense of place, and quality of life value for Cedar Rapids. The loss of a structure from this era is a legacy point to seriously consider. A renovated nineteen thirty Harrison School structure with new expansion and new interior can meet the school district's goal of future-ready for all students. You are planning to renovate and update the nineteen twenty-four Franklin School at the middle school level, please reconsider doing this for the nineteen thirty Harrison School structure at the elementary level. Thank you for your consideration of my thoughts and concerns. Sincerely, Mark Stouffer Hunter, Cedar Rapids Historian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Ashley Van Orne. Speaking on Harrison.
Ashley Van Orne, twenty-four sixty-four Second Street Southwest. It's interesting that I state my address because I've been there for several decades. I do that because I'm intentionally legacy building, which is what I'm asking in, us to discuss here today. So I also just want to take a moment and thank the Board who did make the time for this. I myself am a very busy person, not because I enjoy being busy, but because I understand how much there is in being a community member, and I'm glad that at least half the Board valued our time today. Um, I also don't enjoy having conflict with this Board. We have a lot of the same missions, but I disagree with the approach that has been taken more recently. I also just need to put in a disclaimer that I'm representing myself and my own office as a council member and as a citizen and, uh, alumni of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. I also am not part of any coalition with any Historic Preservation Commission. I know that that has often been cited with many of us and then discounted our voices, voices as such. Today I received a flyer from the Vote Yes Committee, which was quite interesting because it talked about the modernization that we must have to make every student future-ready. But I want to talk about another historic building here for a second that was built in nineteen, or seventeen ninety-two and recently upgraded one of its most important and critical, uh, rooms for its success, and that's the White House. We didn't tear down the White House to get a brand-new, modernized, up-to-date Situation Room. We simply renovated one of the rooms within it. And I don't think anybody would say that we must tear down the White House to have an updated Situation Room. Nobody's asking for any student at Harrison to have a lesser education because we want to keep some of the historic components of Harrison. And as a matter of fact, as part of the committee that actually proposed the RFP to bring on the engineering company to propose the architectural designs, it is not necessary to tear down Harrison to accomplish these goals that we share. We saw, um, in that, that we were able to modernize this building and expand and have additions onto it that would accomplish our mutual goals to make every student future-ready and that it was unnecessary to demolish Harrison. Now I will also say that those excellent renderings were also not made privy to the rest of the public. I saw them, I know they exist. I wish that other people could see the other part of the story to explain that it is not necessary to do that. I'm not sure where the bait and switch and the about-face happened that came before this Board. I know that the notes are barely taken here, um, and so I had to go back and watch the video and read in the Gazette article to even find out that this decision had happened because once it left the committee, and I realized, I'm just part of the committee. I've been told repeatedly that we only have so much of a say, even though we've been asked to be ambassadors in the community for other bond issues and, and so forth. But I would tell you, if the city had a chance to go back and keep the Green Square Train Depot, we would. It is one of the things that we regret the most. Marion has done an excellent job of keeping that part of their history and we deeply regret it. I would also say that the committee, having spoken with them the other night, we would have never selected the Harrison site, even though it is strategically the most important site between Madison and Harrison, if we would have known that there would have been this about-face and it would have been inevitably proposed for demolition. I spoke with that group earlier this week and we said that had we have known that that was going to happen, we would have chosen Madison, because if we're just going about demolishing buildings, that's not the site we would have chosen. Additionally, as much as people want to separate these issues, the school bond issue is at play in this decision. The school bond issue is fraught with trust issues from previous, uh, consolidations and school projects with the elementary schools. Unfortunately, ultim- your ultimate decision on this jeopardizes or potentially helps the success of the next initiative. And if you fail to do the right thing and reverse the decision on this, if you lose that bond issue, it's on your hands. I want to reiterate again, we wish for the same great access to education, but the method by which you are, you are proposing to do it in this project lacks the necessity. It lacks the community input and it lacks transparency. Please reverse your decision.
Thank you. Don Taylor. Speaking on Harrison.
Don Taylor, eleven hundred O Avenue Northwest. Uh, I was on the committee that talked about whether we wanted to close Harrison or Taylor also, and, and we did select that we wanted to keep Harrison and, and, not Taylor, Madison, I mean, Harrison and Madison, and, uh, we weren't aware of the fact that there was a third option. So we could argue transparency might be a problem because, uh, I really, I really don't know where the third choice came from because we never heard or thought of, of a third choice. We, we, it wasn't discussed with us. All that aside, I'm, I'm a retired history teacher and I'm also, I also went to Harrison School and so my heart is in keeping Harrison open. But more importantly, my heart is with kids and with the neighborhood. And, uh, the northwest neighborhood is not going to revitalize without a school. It's not going to happen. So the school, having a school is more important than anything, except the kids. We need to think about kids first, then think about community, and then think about what choices we make. I know that educational choices are difficult. I wasn't in the room where it happens. I'd like to be, but, but I'm not in the room where it happens to make those kinds of choices. So I don't know what information you had other than what our recommendation was from the committee, and it could very easily have been something that might assuage everybody's mind. I, I really don't know, but, uh, transparency, I think, needed to be, needed to be shown at least in the final choice, that final decision. Uh, man, they make good arguments. I can't, I can't say that they don't make good arguments, but like I said, the two things that are important to me are the kids and the neighborhood. And if we can keep Harrison and fix it so that it works for kids and neighborhood, then I'm for that. If, if it's necessary that we have to tear Harrison down to keep the neighborhood and to keep the school in the neighborhood, then I can live with that. It will, it will be mildly disappointing to me, but you know, maybe, maybe our kids deserve something new instead of something reused. I, I don't, I, I don't have good answers because I don't have all the information, but I do know from what I hear here and from what I feel, maybe we could keep Harrison open and use it and continue to use it and, uh, and, uh, maybe we can work on transparency for the next decision.
Thank you. Lisa Kindred. Will be speaking on Harrison.
Hello, my name is Lisa Kindred. I live at twenty-five thirty-five Covington Road, Palo. Um, my children attended Cedar Rapids Schools. I still live within the district and I'm here today to speak with you about the significance of Harrison Elementary School as well as the impact of your demolition plan that will have, be on our community and environment. I'd like to begin by noting that Harrison Elementary School was deemed eligible for the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand fourteen, following an application completed by a former school board member, Mary Mesterling. The building is also eligible to become a local landmark, fulfilling more than one necessary criteria. This building is clearly important to our community's heritage and culture. First of all, Harrison Elementary is associated with, um, lies of significant persons in our past. The building was designed by an architect, Harry E. Hunter, a prominent architect of the nineteen twenties and thirties in Cedar Rapids. He also designed the gorgeous Commonwealth Apartment Building on Second Avenue. The Harrison Building possesses a large mural in its foyer painted by art, an artist, William E. Henning, who worked alongside Grant Wood. And Grant Wood actually is the one who recommended he get the job and advised him on the mural. Second, Harrison Elementary embodies the distinctive characteristics of important type, period, or method of construction. Harrison was built in nineteen twenty-nine in the English Tudor Gothic style. There are only two other buildings in Cedar Rapids that remain with this style. One is nine, the nineteen twenty-one Kenwood School Building at C Avenue and Thirty-Fifth Street. It's now a church and a daycare, and the Cedar Rapids Country Club, main structure built in nineteen twenty-eight. Harrison is also the only example of a school building constructed between nineteen twenty-five and nineteen forty-nine in all of Cedar Rapids. What's more, Harrison remains one of the very few historic buildings with character and heritage in that northwest neighborhood, following the flood especially. This building possesses structurally sound construction, even by today's standards, including steel-framed reinforced walls and floors. In addition to showing understanding- In addition to showing understanding of the cultural benefits of keeping this building around, rehabilitation and reuse of Harrison's building would also demonstrate that the Cedar Rapids School Board is paying attention to our climate crisis and understands the damage and harmful environmental impacts of demolishing a building that's still viable. Surviving older structures lasted long because they were built well, with quality materials that are now rare or impossible to find at an affordable cost. When an older building is torn down, we lose the building's embedded energy, the energy that's expended to build it, harvest the materials, transport it, and manpower. The EPA states that demolition and new construction debris accounts for 25% of solid waste ending up in U.S. landfills each year. Keeping an average-sized house out of a landfill diverts 40 to 80 tons of waste in our landfill. Given the size and the building materials of Harrison, that would probably add 10 times as much waste to our city's landfill, which is already nearly full. Even if an older building is replaced with a new building that's extremely energy-efficient, it takes decades for a new building to break even, and the energy savings simply because demolition and construction require so much energy and they use so many resources. And much newer construction is built to last 30 years. So the practice of discarding buildings that can be rehabilitated is not something that's sustainable. And it doesn't show much consideration for the future. The current demolition plan seems to only consider the upfront costs of today, not the hidden costs or the future costs. There are many excellent examples locally and around the nation of older buildings being rehabilitated and retrofitting to be more energy-efficient, and many have been schools. I'm asking the board to show not only consideration for the local heritage, which does have its place in education, but for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Truzik? Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Mary Treznock, and I reside at 2516 26th Street Drive Southeast here in Cedar Rapids. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the proposed demolition of Harrison Elementary School. I'm urging you to reconsider that decision. And there are a number of reasons why we should, many of which have been spoken more eloquently before me this evening, before I came to the podium. But older buildings have an intrinsic value. They're built with higher-quality materials such as rare hardwoods and wood from old-growth forests that don't even exist any longer. And you never know. When you destroy an older building, a historic building, you never know what you're demolishing that you maybe don't even see. And if you look around, even at our new businesses in Cedar Rapids, what do new businesses prefer? They prefer older buildings. Now, of course, chains, you know, like a Walgreens or whatever, they need new buildings, and they have a reason for that. But if you look around our own city, you look in downtown, you look in the Newbo District, you look in the Czech Village area, businesses are going into older buildings. That's where they get their energy, as someone spoke about before. And you look in that neighborhood, and people who are more familiar with the neighborhood than I am, you know, there aren't a lot of commercial buildings, older buildings in that neighborhood. But the ones that are, you know, you have the Cultivate Hope Corner Store, which was an old building that was a grocery store that was like in the early 1900s and remained a grocery store till like the mid-1900s. And today, it's a grocery store for that neighborhood again. And you look at the new, or not the new building, the new Mirbach Theater that's taken an existing building and has made it something that the neighborhood can use. And if you look further away at other communities, I mean, there was a reference to Iowa City having older schools. You can also look at Grinnell. I don't know how many of you have been to Grinnell. They remodeled their old junior high school that was built in the 19, I think, 1920s. It's a gorgeous hotel. And I started to, I put in my notes to say, like, I can't think how many times I've heard people were express remorse about tearing down the train station downtown. Well, we heard it one more time this evening. I mean, once buildings are torn down, you don't, it's over. Older buildings are evidence of our community's cultural history. Residents and a gentleman spoke earlier about taking visitors to Harrison. They're able to witness the aesthetic and the cultural history of our city when they see those older buildings. They give people a sense of place. They give people a sense of connection. It is part of a neighborhood. And we don't get do-overs once we demolish a building. The regret only goes one way, just like with the old railroad station. It's regret, and it goes one direction. Once the building is demolished, there is no opportunity to renovate or to save it. It's gone. It's gone. So in conclusion, I'd ask that you reconsider your decision to demolish Harrison School, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Chris Kronball? Okay. That concludes all public comments.
That's all. So I know this board had the opportunity to look at this, this school a number of times. We ended up voting back in April. It was late April in our meeting. And I just maybe wanted to kind of share some of the things from my perspective, what I feel like we saw as board members. But we certainly talked about it a number of times. I remember hearing, you know, about the recommendation from the committee that met. And then shortly after that, we had a couple of listening sessions, the two schools that were going to be impacted, Madison and Harrison. There was also a survey that took place, and I remember the presentation that we received. It felt like the overwhelming support was for a new facility, but that it was at Harrison's location. Like, we've heard even tonight that the Harrison neighborhood is a very important neighborhood, keeping that school there, certainly heard that. But I heard loud and clear that that committee had two options. And so I would say, I mean, it's certainly concerning that not all options were considered. And so, but to look at what was covered in those listening sessions, which was the same presentation that we got here in the boardroom, out in the community, I think both of those listening sessions were well-attended. And the information that we got, when we looked at all of the information that came in, I remember feeling like this was the best decision to make. Certainly not an easy decision to make by a long shot, but the concerns. And I went back and looked at some of the notes that we had. The school that's proposed at Harrison is 90,700 square feet. The price per square foot is how you came up with the cost of the school, and that was $310 a square foot. So that got us to $28,017,000. There were two other line items that were in there. One was to demo the existing building, which was listed at $350,000. There was a third item there, which was to salvage and reinstall historic elements of that building. As many people have stated, there's a lot of history in that building, not just in the exterior, but certainly elements inside. So $400,000 was also added to that budget. That brought the total that we saw as a board to $28,867,000. And the slide was that this recommendation will best serve students, is fiscally responsible, and will honor historical elements of the existing Harrison building. And that's certainly something that I hear people debating, how well does it do that? But I can tell you, as a board member and the way that I voted in favor of this plan, I really did believe that this was what was in the best interest of students. Recently, having conversations, looking at the way that budget is allocated, the thought is that, you know, because I do work, I think several of you know that I work down in the New Bohemia District and very familiar with the historical elements that are down there. I'm also very familiar with all of the new construction that's going on down in that area. One of the things that I've talked to several people about in this community is, you know, post-flood are moving of the Czech Museum. And so if you haven't been down to the Czech area, to imagine that that building was right on the river and was moved and lifted. I don't actually have the data on exactly how much that costs to move. I heard several figures, one that was $600,000 and one that I think was as high as $2 million. The thought that our district could potentially allocate that money that is set aside for demolition right now to potentially help fund somebody in this community that were interested in moving that facility, I know that that's something that I would strongly consider as a board member. I still believe that a new facility is in the best interest of students. And I still support the decision that I made back in April to support this plan. I'll certainly yield the floor to my fellow board members if they get any additional comments or thoughts.
So are you saying that to consider actually moving Harrison?
If there are interest, I mean, right. I mean, one of the issues that we have as a school district is that we only own so much land. So I mean, in order to, you know, move a facility, there would need to be some land that it would be able to go to. And I don't even know what those options are. I mean, that's not an area of my expertise, but I certainly did have the opportunity to talk to some people that, you know, that had some experience in that area. So I would at least want to explore it if there were folks in this community that were interested in bringing an opportunity like that forward. But at this point, we don't have a place to move this school because we only have so much land.
I want to thank everyone for taking time to come and speak to us tonight. I do appreciate your thoughts. I live in that neighborhood on the Northwest side and have lived on the Northwest side my entire adult life. I have a deep appreciation for old things, old homes, old buildings. I lived in an old home for most of my lifetime. And so I come to this decision with a lot of empathy for what you all are telling us. The other experience that I have that I bring to this board table is that I'm an educator. So I'm here to advocate for the very best for our students. And as President Tominski said, we did spend a considerable amount of time talking to Monroe or Madison families and Harrison families before this decision was reached. And as he said, the overwhelming response was that people wanted a new building. So then it became a matter of, does it go on the Madison site or the Harrison site? The other thing that became clear to me was that the Harrison site has a lot of wraparound services. The rec center is there. There's daycare in the neighborhood. It's, I believe, a thriving neighborhood once the flood protection goes in. And so I do feel strongly that that school belongs on the Harrison site. So with those two pieces of information that we got from the public, I believe that this is the right decision for our kids, for our kids. They deserve the best facilities we can provide to them. So I appreciate all of your input, but I also would stand by my decision.
And I would like to comment too. I did attend the sessions at Madison and Harrison and listened to the concerns within the neighborhood. And I am in agreement with President Tominski and Vice President Garlock that I stand by my decision that I made previously, that we do want what is best for our students, our staff, and our community.
I don't know, Dr. Grover, Ryan, what's the status of the project right now? What steps have we taken moving forward with the Harrison project? What can we potentially do if we were to change our decision?
So I can speak to that. Yes, the plans are already underway. We've spent time with both the Madison staff as well as the Harrison staff to work through the design process. And so the architectural firm, it's already underway. We've already invested dollars within that process. And so we are, you know, on the schedule as intended. Of course, the students are still in the building at this particular time, and they're looking to stay in the building for the remainder of this school year. And we're looking to start the construction process at the end of the school year.
Okay. What I want to say is...
The other thing, though, in conversations and discussions, just to echo President Tominski in regards to relocating of the Harrison site, if that's something that the community is interested in, I'm sure we would be willing to a degree to try to work with the timeline as best as possible, as long as it doesn't impact the budget in an astronomical way. Just want to make that as a note too, if that does come up as a potential option.
Thank you. I guess what I want to say is, hearing about the committee process that was used to make this decision and then hearing about the listening sessions that were done, I remember reading some of those comments as well. I don't know if I would describe it as overwhelmingly in favor of a new building. I didn't tally up all the responses to see if somebody did. I'd like to be interested, you know, to see that information. Maybe we should publish the information and let everybody in the community read it so they can judge for themselves whether or not it was overwhelming support in favor of a new building. But also, the same bait and switch that was done to the committee essentially was done in those listening sessions. Because when I read the comments, the people who were asking for a new building were under the impression that it was going to be on the Madison site. They weren't saying, "Build us a new building, period." These were people from the Madison neighborhood who we haven't heard from tonight, but we did hear from at the time, who wanted to keep their building open. I remember very impassioned pleas, actually accusations, not against you, Dr. Grover, but past administrations, that the rationale used for saying that Madison was an underperforming school and therefore didn't deserve to stay open because of the structure of the school were essentially lies. And that's the conversation I remember at that time when I voted to keep Harrison open. And so it seems like the same thing is happening here now. Where's the information that this was overwhelming? Where's the community support? It's clear to me throughout this entire process, and it should be clear to all of us because we're asking people to vote to approve $220 million worth of additional projects right now, that the community support is absolutely essential to make these projects happen and to make the school system run as effectively as possible. But we're denying, once again, the community the chance to vote on a project like, should we demolish Harrison Elementary? Should we close down other elementary schools? They've been denied the opportunity to weigh in that, and now we're going to them and asking for them, you know, hands out, saying, "Please, let us move forward with our plans." They're not their plans. They're our plans. And it's just, we do it time and time again. And I don't know why anyone would take us seriously when we're doing that. We say that we haven't gone out for a bond in 23 years. We've spent, with Harrison, how much will we have spent in saved money? Money that belongs to the taxpayers of the people of Cedar Rapids, who are, you know, the people interested, the controlling people of this school district, is $150 million? They haven't had a vote in that, and now we want more money from them. And so I think we should overturn this recommendation. I think we should go back to the drawing board. I don't think we should be closing any schools down if we don't have to, especially if they serve a community and a neighborhood. Keep hearing from people about the statistics and the research that says that smaller schools are better for students. And we don't even really address, we say we're addressing what's best for students, but it just so happens to line up with what we want to do as a board. And so I think it's disingenuous, more or less, the entire process. And I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proposal from the community.
Second, that motion dies.
I just hope everyone's watching.
With no further business, we stand adjourned.